.........
Cardis, Garcia, De Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villa, Gosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session and members of the council, I know we have a number of presentations set for today, but taking advantage of the fact that we have a quorum at this time, I'd like to dispense with consent items. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Misakowski moves and Ms. Perry seconds.
Now would be time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda and seeing no requests, general public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and confirm the assessment.
Okay, members, item number one is now before us and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is now closed. Any members wishing to call this item special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item number one, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items two through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. Public hearings were held on items 19, 20, and 21, and committee reports have been distributed on 19 and 20 but not 21 at this point.
Okay, there are told 21 on the desk as we await that report to be distributed. On the balance of items two through 22, members, hearings have been held in committees and a motion from the floor would be required to reopen these public hearings. Any specials? Any specials on two through 22? I think Ms. Perry, you wanted to talk about item 21? Okay, that's...
Want me to do that now?
No, we're waiting that report to be distributed. If there's no request for specials, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 23 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on item 23. Public hearing is open and closed. Members wishing to call this item special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 23, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And Mr. Clerk is at the end of our regular agenda.
That is, Mr. President.
Okay, let's now turn to presentations. This being Friday, as you know, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. Let's begin with Councilmember Parks. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go through my presentation, I'd like to ask the Rainbow Music Academy to come up and honor us with a selection from Bach titled "Boree", and we're going to introduce them after they do the selection. Now it's my honor to introduce to you Dr. Chan Ho Young, who's the founder of the Rainbow Music Academy, and seven individuals who have contributed considerably to the program. And asked all of them to come up: Philip Kim, Francis Hsu, So Ki Choi, Min Kim, Timothy Malouf, Jason Chin, and Kate Lismann. If you all come up. There. That's there. Then, then, then stay up there, then. The Rainbow Music Academy is an institution where students may receive violin and cello lessons at no cost to their families and their instruments provided by the academy. They offer lessons on classical music, jazz, world and popular music, and as they grow, they will offer lessons in other instruments, as well as voice lessons. Since Rainbow Music Academy inception, these seven individuals, under the outstanding leadership of Dr. Young, have sacrificed every Saturday night to teach and mentor students. That is why they are honored here today. We honor them for their commitment to youth and to the educational program, and for their collective effort inspiring these students to express their talents, which will ultimately provide them a platform in which they share with the community, the universal language of music. We'd like to thank them for their public service, and also, we'd like to ask Dr. Young to come up and make some comments, and then we're going to have one more selection.
Thank you, City Council, and Mr. Bernard Parks for recognizing our program. Since the inception of the program 12 months ago, student teachers have brought wonderful violin instruction, friendship, and oneness to the program, and I'm sure their efforts will lead into even greater things in their lives, to the Rainbow Music Academy, and also to the best city in the world, Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Just wanted to ask whether or not you all could perform every single morning of the year here at the LA City Council, just to get things kicked off. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful music. Congratulations to each one of you. Talented beyond belief, and good luck in your music careers, definitely.
Now, at this time, what we'd like is the students to come up and join their instructors, and they're going to do a musical selection of "Ode to Joy." And for the young people, turn on Channel 35 this evening, and you'll hear it again. And so I'd like to ask the honorees, Dr. Young, to come up, and we'll give you a certificate, and also, we have a certificate for each of our instructors. So at this time, Dr. Young. Also, we'd like Philip Kim. Francis Hsu. Next is Francis. Next, we have So Ki Choi. Next, we have Min Kim. Next, Timothy Malouf. Jason Chin. And then Kate Lismann. And let's give one more round of applause to the Rainbow Music Academy.
Mr. Parks, take a wild guess at whose requesting "Hail to the Chief."
Well, you know, I had the mic.
For our next presentation, let me recognize Ms. Perry.
We have a very lovely presentation this morning, in anticipation of the first annual bolero festival this Sunday, September the 26th, at 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And this has been organized by myself, the Ninth District, and staff, and former general manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Al Nodel. And I'm going to let these young ladies dance first. And I want to give you their names: Luciana Aguilar, Crystal Aceves, Esther Basera, Wendy Camarena, Michelle Campos, Evelyn Garcia, Dacia Martinez, Melissa Moran, Fernanda Perez, Bianca Rojel. Okay, and we are premiering their original dance, called the Barefoot Bolero. They're barefoot. All right, if we can have the music, please. Let's give them a big hand. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies. That was beautiful. And these young ladies are here from the nonprofit organization called City Hearts. And I have asked Delia Torres to stand with me side by side, so that we can make sure to communicate with all of those who are listening. As many of you know, we're going to be celebrating the first annual bolero festival this Sunday, September the 26th, in Exposition Park Rose Garden. This is a first for South Los Angeles, and is one of the official City of Los Angeles Latino Heritage Month events. The first annual bolero festival will feature live musical performances, booths, and arts and crafts for young people. And will feature performances from well-known opera star Susanna Guzman, and world-renowned singer José Luis Rodríguez El Puma, along with local trios and dancers. Other performances will include Yadi Morey and his orchestra, Mariachi Alma de México, Trio Los Amigos, Supernova Quartet, Trio Guadalajara, Trio Casablanca, Mariachi Divas, and Bolero Sol. That's pretty much in Spanish. Okay. Now, we're okay on that. I think we're okay on that part. The event will feature well-known community master of ceremonies, Sid García of KABC News, Henry Zaka, Carla Ortiz, and Francisco Paco Varela. And it's a pleasure to be here today and to recognize these very special young people who've come to celebrate our upcoming bolero festival, and to help me encourage everyone here, and everyone watching at home, to come on Sunday at 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and share in the festivities. All right, and I think that the young ladies have something they wanted to do with the council members? You do want to do that? All right. These young people have something that they wanted to show all of you, so listen to your leader, Sherry, and then they're going to come to each one of you, and they- And they want to just take a quick minute and show you something so that you won't be embarrassed when you come to the festival on Sunday. All right? So if you just give them a minute of your time, and don't run and hide, don't try to hide in the back. Okay, Tom, get on out there. See, I know Tom Labanze will do this because he's not shy. Okay, and Martin Ludlow's here. Where's the guy who works at the Olive Garden? Is he out here anywhere? That guy from the Olive Garden. Where did he go? And the one with the good hair and the nice teeth, where's he? He's not here? Okay. All right, well, I don't want to leave him out because then they get mad. All right, we've got two brave, two brave men. Okay, so you have like five girls for one man. Okay, that's fine. They'll be able to teach him. Okay, do we need a little music? Give them a little music. Okay, let's get to work on Mr. Ludlow. Get to work on him. Okay. All right, very nice turn. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. All right, that was the City Hearts. And I'm going to take you guys in the back and we're going to have a nice photograph and give you your certificate. Thank you so much and hope to see everybody on Sunday in Exposition Park. Thank you. Tom Labanze is still twirling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Our next presentation will be Mr. Padilla. Two presentations. Well, Mr. Padilla, really quickly, right before we go, if we can reconsider seven, there's a technical amendment. If we can open the roll and reconsideration of number seven. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And if we can remove in item number seven, the line items for Gridley Ranch as part of that, and that has concurrence with the council districts and our CLA. And then, as amended, if we can move that and open the rolls, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And please send that forthwith. Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, members of the council and members of the public who are here. Before beginning my next presentation, I want to ask Mr. Carrathenass a question. Mr. Carrathenass, how many years have you been playing golf? How many years have you been playing golf? I've been playing about five, six years.
Twenty years.
Twenty years playing golf. Well, did you know that some great golfers come out of Pacoima? Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Angela Viella, a 13-year-old golfer from Pacoima who recently placed fifth in the Junior World Golf Championship in San Diego. She, as if that achievement wasn't enough, she was only two Americans to finish in the top five in this tournament. She's been ranked in the top 100 amongst amateurs nationwide. And to cause a little ruckus on this council, because we get into it sometimes, she's being recruited by both UCLA and USC. So you have your work cut out for her as to which school she decides to go to. She's been playing golf since the age of nine, when she started swinging in her grandfather's clubs around the house, probably to the chagrin a little bit of her father. I don't know if there was any windows that were sacrificed in the process of your training. But one of the great things that really brings it back to the community, back to the neighborhood, is there's another Pacoima native who's become Angela, keeps in touch with from time to time to learn from him, his experiences, both in golf and as to how to handle the pressure. Golf isn't exactly the most popular sport in Pacoima, giving way to soccer and baseball and basketball and other sports. So I think it's with some extra pride that we celebrate your achievements here this morning. We're proud of you. We're also in the middle of Latino Heritage Month, so for a sport that's not too popular within our community, and especially for young Latinas like you, we're just very, very proud of your achievements and expect a lot of you in the years to come. So congratulations, and we have a certificate here on behalf of the city that we'd like you to put right up there with all your trophies.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of the city council members and a special thank you to Mr. Alex Padilla. Thank you very much.
We'll take them in the back. Oh, thank you. I'll frame this, I'll put this on my shelf. All right. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have one other presentation. Speaking of inspirational women, if I can call forward, please, Mariela Durazo and Alice Goff to stand with me. Members of the council, leadership of women within the labor movement goes back more than 150 years, and certainly from our country's history. We know that women's suffrage was in no small part assisted by the work of women in the labor movement who saw in the vote the power to improve working conditions for the people they represented. Achievements within the labor movement would not have been possible were it not for historical figures like Kate Molyneux, who organized the Troy Laundry Workers, Sarah Bagley, who founded the Lowell Female Labor Reform Association, Mary Harris Mother Jones, who was also better known as the Miner's Angel, and organized the West Virginia Miners to the ripe young age of 94 before passing away. And certainly, more recently, and a friend to Los Angeles, Dolores Huerta, the co-founder of the United Farm Workers Union, who's still very active in those efforts. Well, today we celebrate Los Angeles' own women historical heroes within the labor movement. There are three. Only two of them could join us today, but ladies and gentlemen, within Los Angeles labor movement, we have three women who are not only local leaders in their own right, but are, have recently been elected to international vice president posts within their respective unions. First, let me introduce and present this resolution to Alice Goff. Alice? Alice Goff is a president of ACEA Local 3090, a division of AFSMI, who does a lot of work with the city employees. She's also president of AFSMI District Council 36, and as I mentioned, was recently elected as vice president of the International Union. Alice started working for the City of Los Angeles in the Police Department in 1973, and over the years has worked her way up to the positions of steward, executive board member, and now president. Her contributions in these capacities, amongst the membership that is predominantly female, has led to land-breaking policies for the city in terms of pay equity, family leave, and protecting victims of domestic violence. Her work has been recognized with the Black Labor Leader Award by the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, the African-American Trailblazer Award by the Crenshaw United Methodist Church, and the Rosa Parks Award by the Southern Christian Leadership Conference here in Los Angeles. Let me also introduce and then ask them both to speak. No stranger to these chambers, Marielena Durazo. Marielena, we had a big morning this morning. And Marielena holds a special place in my heart because my father, once a member, always a member, of HRE Local 11, now Unite HRE Local 11. Marielena's been the president of Local 11 since her election in 1989. And since then, she's continued to grow. In July 1996, at the International Conference, she was the first, she became the first Latina elected to the Executive Board. In the year 2001, she was elected to general vice president of HRE International Union, and at the time, the union represented more than 250,000 industry workers in the hospitality industry throughout the United States, Puerto Rico, and Canada. More recently, we know Marielena as the National Director of the Immigrant Workers Freedom Right. In July of this year, after the successful marriage of Unite and HRE, Marielena was again elected to executive vice president of the new Unite HRE International Union, where together they represent more than 440,000 employees throughout their territories. She has also served locally in the City of Los Angeles on the Board of Airport Commissioners, Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners, and the California Coastal Commission. And because of her work and that of Lane and other members of the Coalition, the City of Los Angeles now has and honors a service worker retention ordinance and a living wage ordinance, and many, many other policies to follow. Our third honoree today, who couldn't be with us, is Grinella Greheda, the general manager of SEIU Local 660, also an international vice president in her union, and we'll certainly get her appropriate recognition to her on a timely basis. But let me turn it over to you, Alice, for a few words, and then Marielena.
Just before that, if I may, we actually have one more council member who wants to be here, too. If I can call on Mr. Ludlow, and then we'll be happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, Council President Padilla, when you said "historical," I saw both Alice and Marielena give this look like you were aging them or something. I think what he meant was you're going down in history as two of the best warriors for working families we've ever had. So I'm real proud of you. And Marielena was my first supervisor when I moved to Los Angeles two, two and a half decades ago. Hired me as a union organizer, and I'll tell you, she carries the job as supervisor and advocate well. And Alice, thank you for everything that you've done, and you both, I think, have the right approach on the historical context. We're looking for you, and it's going to happen. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it.
Good save, Mr. Ludlow. Please.
We're looking for you, and it's going to happen. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it.
Good save, Mr. Ludlow. Please, Alice.
Good morning. Thank you. I want to just say thank you so much to Councilman and Council President Padilla, and to you council members for all of your support. I'm here today, but really, it's because of the support and the ability for us to work together on behalf of employees in the City of Los Angeles to just then be able to provide the best services to the communities that we serve jointly, as well as taking care of the employees so that they're able to do the best. It really just, I'm really proud and humbled to be acknowledged, but as I said, it doesn't happen with me alone. And I hope to be able to just continue to do that good work so that I can become then that historical figure. And with my international position, hope to use that to influence and bring better, greater resources for the members in our union. And again, that obviously translates then to the services that we are able to provide. Thank you very much.
I want to congratulate Alice. Thank you very much, Alice, because you represent members who have struggled a lot to get to the middle class. And the women that are at my side are the ones who today are fighting to get the kinds of living standard that you have fought for and won for men and women in your union. And that's what we're trying to do today. I want to thank Councilman Padilla and the rest of you, because when we come to you, there are difficult issues. And you have shown us, I think, that you're rising to the occasion and you're rising to the level of courage that these women and men show in our industry, because they really have to face a lot of intimidation, a lot of challenges, to be able to get what's best for them. And ultimately, when they win those wages, when they win those benefits, when they win a higher standard of living, it's best for all of Los Angeles. So I want to thank all of you for being there when they need you. And again, thank you to the son of one of our members, President Padilla.
And also, we have one other council member who would like to say a few words. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I'll say this for Janice, because I know she would say it. Girls rule. That's our, you know, mantra around this horseshoe. But particularly, I just wanted to stand up and acknowledge both of these women, who not only in their own right have accomplished so much, but they mentor other women. All too often, leaders have not taken the time to mentor other people. And I've seen at every event that I have been, these two women have made sure that they talk about the people they represent, that they have them come up with them. And I just want to say thank you, because it is so critical in your role and responsibility to do that, and have been extraordinary leaders and examples to not only the women standing there, but I think many of us that serve on the city council and fighting the good fight. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Padilla, for recognizing them. It's really quite an honor to have them as leaders in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. And congratulations again to Alice and Marielena. Thank you, Council President. Our next presentation will be given by Councilwoman, do you have more, okay, by Councilwoman Wendy Grul.
George, come on this side, will you? Thank you, colleagues. It is quite an honor for me today to tell you a little story about the people standing next to me. It was just, I think, two weeks ago where I was approached by Officer Leong at a ovarian cancer walk early on a Sunday morning. I think it was about 7:30. She came up to me and she said, you know, I'm a LAPD officer at the Van Nuys Division, and I want to tell you a little story about an incident that happened in your district, and I'd like to be able to see if we could do something for them. And I immediately said, of course, I would love to honor these individuals. On August 29th, we, this woman standing next to me, Jeanette Levine, was at the Ralph's Grocery Store, one in which I frequented until about nine months ago. That was my grocery store at Woodman and Sherman Way. She was unloading her groceries at the grocery store, and when a man came up to her and snatched her purse. And she has the purse, which has proved she got it back. Gentlemen to the left, George and his girlfriend Nadia saw the incident and followed the suspect to the 7300 block of Cantaloupe. George then, in a kind of crazy move, but a wonderful move, tried to hold the suspect until the police could arrive. But the suspect got away. George and Nadia called the police. They were able to get there, to get the perimeter, use K-9, and caught the suspect. And the purse was returned to Jeanette. And without the help of this witness, and Nadia could not be here today, but George and Nadia not only identified the suspect, they went to LAPD Division, they were there for several hours, and really were wonderful citizens of the City of Los Angeles. And as Jeanette told me this morning, she says, you know, you only hear usually about the bad things that young people do, not the good things. And we're here today to honor George Alexander Rodríguez for his heroic act that led to the apprehension of a robber. And I think is someone that is extraordinarily deserving of this award today. I also want to acknowledge Officer Leong, Officer Cancino, and Officer Park, who are here today as well from the Van Nuys Division. And maybe before I make the presentation to George, I'd like Officer Leong, if you would just say a few words, or one of your colleagues, about this incident.
I wanted to thank George, especially for, you know, coming out and helping us. He spent several hours with us. It's not very often that a witness will take a stand and try and help someone, and we just wanted to let him know that we appreciate all of his help and we thank him for all of his efforts.
And George, before you get to say a few words, I don't know if we told you you get to say a few words, but I'm going to ask Jeanette to also talk about the incident. But as I do that, tomorrow is a very special day for Jeanette. She will be 90 years old tomorrow, her birthday. So we want to present you as well with a wonderful birthday greetings, Jeanette, and to say congratulations on your 90th birthday. It's a wonderful way to celebrate it by you wanting to acknowledge this young man standing next to me. Jeanette.
This young man is my hero. He's, he saved me. It was, I thought I was going to have to replace everything in that purse, which would have taken me months to get all those papers. And I wasn't concerned about money. It was just all my cards and my driver's license. just all my cards and my driver's license and everything that was in there. And it makes me feel so good to know that there are young people who are gonna take over this country when I'm gone, who will do things like he did. So...
Thank you. So, George, on behalf of myself, Jeanette, and the officers behind me, and the entire city council, and I think the city as a whole, we'd like to present this proclamation to you and to your girlfriend Nadia, who really went above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you want to say a few words, sir?
Thank you. I felt that that was the right thing to do, you know, I felt like that was my grandma or my mom, it could have happened to them, so that's why I got involved, and everybody else should do the same.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and the rest of the council for allowing me to honor this really wonderful individual and to wish Jeanette her 90th birthday.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grule, and congratulations again, and thank you for your great work. Our next presentation will be Councilmember Tony Cardenas, to be followed by Mr. Labange and followed by Ms. Ludlow. As Mr. Cardenas is coming to the podium, if we can take up item, is it 21, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 21 is an item for which public hearing has been held in the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, and that report has been distributed to all members, as well as a motion 21A, that has also been circulated.
Okay. Do we need any comment, Ms. Perry? Are you good with it? Okay. Okay. If not, then let's open the roll, let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, I do need to have it go forthwith.
Yep, forthwith on 21.
And I need the rules to be suspended, so the item can leave council now, because we're on a very tight deadline with HUD.
Okay, if we can open the roll on suspending rules, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, all the rules are suspended, everybody go nuts. No, we'll send that right away. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Cardenas, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Joined with me is Ms. Mendoza, as the children say, at Canterbury Elementary School. We have four teachers from the Mendoza family who are here that we're gonna present and honor today, and also I'd like to welcome the principal, Ms. Parlam, who joined us as well. But equally, perhaps more importantly, the reason why we have teachers, we have the children from the fourth, third, and first grade, and kindergarten from Canterbury Elementary. Will you please stand so we can recognize you? They're fine examples of the good job that the Mendoza sisters are doing at Canterbury. We, us adults, have been talking the whole time, but the kids have been very, very quiet and attentive. Jesus and Sylvia Mendoza also were joined by their mother Sylvia, their father couldn't make it. Jesus and Sylvia Mendoza immigrated to Los Angeles in 1971, and Jesus from Ituacan and Sylvia from Jalisco, Jalisco the finest part of Mexico, in my opinion. Jesus worked at General Motors in Van Nuys and retired when GM closed its doors in the 1980s. Jesus and Sylvia, both with third grade education, settled in the San Fernando Valley in 1982, and have seen their seven children grow to become successful individuals. For example, Norma Mendoza is a teacher at Canterbury Elementary, Coco Mendoza is a teacher at Canterbury Elementary, Rosa Mendoza is also a teacher at Canterbury Elementary. Jesus Mendoza is not a teacher at Canterbury Elementary, but he's completing his teaching credential at CSUN, and will soon join his sisters in the field, and I wonder what elementary school he's gonna teach in, if he chooses to teach at elementary. Dora Mendoza is also a teacher at Canterbury Elementary. Their other sibling, Jose Mendoza, is an engineer for the city of Los Angeles, and also, is he contemplating teaching someday? No? Okay. He decided to stay in engineering, unlike some of us chose not to stay in engineering. Sylvia Mendoza is completing her master's degree at UC Riverside, and the family hopes she too enters the teaching field. Seven of the six Mendoza children graduated from San Fernando High School, and also California State University Northridge in the San Fernando Valley. The youngest sister attended Granada Hills High School, The Renegade, and is attending UC Riverside. In addition to that, the Mendoza family has always encouraged others to pursue a higher education. Rosa, in fact, is teaching for the LAUSD Mother Daughter Program, which encourages girls and their mothers to pursue a higher education. I can't think of a better role model for these young girls. Today, I'm recognizing the Mendoza sisters for doing something that is out of the ordinary. Aside from living, eating, and shopping together, these Mendoza sisters work together at the same elementary school in my district, at Canterbury Elementary. As we celebrate Latino Heritage Month this month, the Mendoza family is one fine example of the success stories that we have that abound us here in the city and the community of Los Angeles. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce to you the Mendoza sisters in no particular order. Who would like to come up first and say a few words? Okay.
On behalf of the staff at Canterbury and all the teachers for LA Unified, we thank you for recognizing our efforts to educate our community. Thank you.
Yo me siento muy orgullosa de mis hijos y muy orgullosa de estar aquí por ellas también.
Their mother Sylvia Mendoza just expressed how proud she is of her children and her family, and she thanks us for honoring them today.
My name is Rosa Mendoza, and it's an honor to be here. I want to thank everyone for inviting us, and I do want to encourage everyone to follow our footsteps. If we did it, everyone could do it too.
Thank you.
I'm still Mendoza, not really, I recently got married, so I'm Dora Alvarez, and I'd just like to thank everyone for having us here. This is a great honor to have come here, and I wish the same opportunity for everyone else.
Dora, is your husband a teacher?
He was a teacher here, he's currently the coordinator at our school.
Oh, okay, so he's at Canterbury as well?
Yes.
Okay, what a surprise.
I'd like to thank everybody, and especially the children, because they've been sitting so wonderfully down, and I'd just like to say that it's great that you're honoring teachers, and that we're looking at teachers as a good, useful persons in our lives, instead of looking down on education, so I think it's very great. Thank you very much for honoring us.
And also Rosa. Okay. And that's an extra one to give too, because she has placed the person. Okay. So, once again, in the spirit, in honor of these teachers, these fine teachers that we have behind us, and also in honor of Latino Heritage Months, it's, I think it's wonderful and appropriate that we exemplify these fine examples of individuals and families, Latino families throughout the community, and also remind us that these individuals don't only inspire and give a lot of effort and love to only Latino children, they give that to all the children that come into their lives. So, once again, we thank you for your commitment and your dedication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and as we take the photograph, we want to thank all the students that are here as well. I don't know if they all want to stand up and be recognized by us as well, but maybe the children can stand up, and we'll thank them for coming in. There we go. You can see that tonight on Channel 35. All right. Viva Mendoza. Our next presentation will be, our next three presentations will be Councilmember Labanges.
Mr. President, members, it's a very special family that we follow right here, and great teachers those young women are, but here's a great teacher here, Estelle Bush. Before all the children leave, we want to congratulate these great family, the Mendoza family, very much, but we'd like to ask the children, if you would, please, to join with me in saluting another teacher, Estelle Bush, who's celebrating her 90th birthday, and we sing, "Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday dear Estelle Bush, Happy Birthday to you." 90 years old. Thank you very much. Young, 90 years young. Estelle Bush has been a teacher herself, a teacher in the field of arts and humanities, a teacher in the field of theater. She's been involved in women in theater for many, many years, and is an inspiration to many, many people. She's a familiar face to many council members here, even those in this chamber and those who've served before us. Estelle, I wanted to invite you down here and comment to you, and on behalf of Wendy Grule, myself, and Mayor James K. Hahn, salute you on your 90th birthday, and ask you for a few words, Estelle.
I want to thank Tom Labange, Wendy Grule, and all the other council members that are here present today. This chamber has been very kind to my company, which is Synthaxis Theater Company, and I've heard mentioned here about women who have helped women rise above their adversities. I have always been for that, and in fact, one of the plays that I have written many years ago, called "A Woman's Place,"
Excuse me, I want to make sure everybody can hear you. If we can just ask for a little quiet in chambers, please, and ask the teachers to kindly, thank you, please continue.
Thank you, sir. It details the emphasis and the rise of women of history who have helped raise the glass ceiling. But I want to honor one of the people who is with me today, who's been working with me for 29 years in Synthaxis Theater Company, and we have Mary Mann here.
Mary.
Mary?
See you.
Mary has been a very prolific writer, and one of the best productions that she has ever done was called Thugger and Natasha, which with the help of Tom Labange, we toured into 10 of the schools in his district, and is against guns and violence. So, we bring messages to the schools, and we need help, we always need help, we need money to bring all these programs to the schools, and we have a program that is called, now I forget now, senior memory. Theater Tools in the Schools, and we have brought these programs to, in classrooms and after-school workshops, and that is, we read and dramatize stories, and then ask the children to reenact those stories. And it is always with a message for them for the betterment of their behavior patterns, and to advocate the knowledge and wonderful impact of learning. So, I want to thank Tom Labange and Wendy Grule, who have helped us immeasurably last season with funding to bring these programs to the schools, and I thank you for having me here today.
Estelle, thank you very much, and I present you with this great loaf of pumpkin bread, because today, like every day, Estelle Bush, you're an angel in the city of angels. Give her a big hand, everybody, on her beautiful 90th birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
You know, Mr. President's a piano man, too, up there. Get a piano.
Congratulations on your birthday, Ms. Bush, too. Mr. Labange, you have another presentation as well?
I pass.
All right. Our next presentation then will be from Mr. Ludlow. And just before Mr. Ludlow goes, one second, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Parks, I believe, wants to reconsider an item and continue that?
We'd like to reconsider number five and continue it to next Friday. City Attorney wants to review this settlement.
Okay, if we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is reconsidered, and we will continue that for one week pending the city attorney review. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Martin Ludlow from the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we recognize Country Villateras Assisted Living in honor of National Assisted Living Week. Country Villateras accepts residents 65 years of age and older, and provides care and activities to enhance the quality of life for residents in their later years. These activities include, but are not limited to, exercise, outdoor recreation, and field trips. One of the facets of this particular program is that it is a program within a network of 37 healthcare centers that are privately owned by Steve and Diane Weissman. It has met the medical, emotional, personal needs of elderly and disabled residents and their families for the last 35 years. And today, we have with us not only the director, but a number of people who I'm gonna ask to come forward here in one moment, but one of the real tributes to the efforts of Country Villateras' staff is their most mature resident, who is 105 years old, has enjoyed living at the facility and experiencing the programs and services for the last 20 years of her life. And so, it's a real honor to bring forward the director, Joanne Remus, and Linda Ware, who's the activities director, as well as Michael and Rose, two individuals who live there. And I wanted to present this certificate to the director on behalf of the city of LA, essentially to say thank you for the work that you do, thank you for the care that your facility and program extends, the seniors and the elderly. My mother, who is 74 and is president of her tenant association, she's spring chicken, and she reminds me every day that those people in their 80s, 90s, and hundreds could not do what they do if it weren't for people such as you and Linda, for all the care that you extend. So, on behalf of the city of LA, I'd like to present you with this certificate and ask you to say a few words. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would like to thank Councilman Ludlow for this award on behalf of Country Villateras. As he said, we are owned by, privately owned by a husband and wife who've been in business for over 35 years. Their vision and dedication to the elderly and disabled has provided us with the direction to serve our community with pride. Working with the elderly is a privilege, a joy, and an enormous responsibility. It is our belief that our residents and their loved ones who entrusted us with their care deserve the very best. Thank you again, Councilman Ludlow and your staff, for honoring Country Villateras.
My pleasure. Linda, would you like to say a word? Why don't you say a word?
Activities of daily living are so important to the elderly, as well as getting out into the community, and as well as staying there. They're not dead yet, they're only seen now, but they still have a lot of energy, and I would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go back and take a quick photo in one second, okay? In continuing our focus on seniors, I also wanted to present a certificate to the West Adams ADSC program of Delta Sigma Theta Life Development. I'm gonna ask representatives to come forward. Bonnie and Harriet are here. Many of you have passed by the facility at West and Adams for many, many years. It has long been known as the center of a lot of great activities for seniors in the mid-city area, and obviously within the 10th Council District. As we continue to celebrate National Adult Day Services Week, in honor of this special occasion, we wanted to recognize Delta Adult Day Care and Support Center. The program has been there for many, many years. They provide services for patients 60 years of age and older, as well as their families. In addition to some of those services, they continue to provide respite care, socialization exercises, recreation activities, therapeutic care, and nutritious meals. One of the things that stands out is the program originated in 1983, and the real purpose was educating the public on services and benefits that Adult Day Services Centers provide. The theme for this year is Adult Day Services, Sharing, Caring, One Day at a Time. And so, I would like to present this certificate in honor of National Adult Day Services Week, which is September 19th through the 25th, to Harriet Edwards, Executive Director, and Bonnie Shoemaker, Director of the West Adams Adult Day Services Center. And I'd like to turn to Harriet first to say a few words.
I just want to thank Councilman Ludlow for honoring us today. Seniors are a well-forgotten population, and we honor him, and we are very grateful for the help that he has given us over the years. for the help that he has given us over the years.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of Delta Sigma Theta Life Development and our executive director, who's so ably spoken for herself, and for the participants and the families of the daycare. Thank you, Councilman, for your recognition of us, and thank you to the whole council for your recognition of the Adult Day Support Centers. There is one in each one of the councilmatic districts, and it makes such a difference for all of the seniors throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we sincerely thank you for that support. Just real quickly, adult day care, it seems to be one of the best-kept secrets in the whole continuum of long-term care. We are able, at an adult day care, to provide financial viability, an alternative to long-term care in skilled nursing facilities. It helps the families to stay together longer, so they can stay in their homes rather than being put somewhere else. Caregivers have peace of mind. It helps for the caregivers to be able to continue to work and not have to worry about their loved one that's at home. So daycare does a wonderful work. It also provides dignity and self-worth for the senior who has developed a whole lifetime of sophistication. So it's a marvelous work, and thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you for being here. I also wanted to mention that both Harriet and Bonnie were very gracious colleagues, and also for our citywide electeds who are listening, this facility right now is facing an $83,000 budget shortfall, and it's one of the consequences of, obviously, the changing dynamics that we're dealing with, with public resources. But again, the great services that this facility provides to seniors in the area is dependent on the support from the city council and the mayor. And so, obviously, as we continue to get ready for this year's budget deliberation, here's an example of a program that is continuing to increase their services with decreased funding, and they are operating with $83,000 budget deficit. So we want to appreciate you all for being here so much, and continue to do the great work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. We'll do a quick follow-up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. I believe that is our last presentation. Mr. Labonge, you're finished with your presentations?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, two passes for Mr. Labonge, which no doubt we'll use in the future. That finishes our presentations, colleagues, and we have run through the agenda as well. Do we have any remaining business?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Let's post and refer those.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at 12:45 on Wednesday, September 29th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, as long as that meets policy, we'll let him go.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, November 12th for city business. That also meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on Tuesday and Wednesday, September 28th and 29th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. He's excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on Friday, November 19th for city business. Meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Tuesday and Wednesday, September 28th and 29th for city business. A motion is required.
All right, Mr. Labonge moves. Ms. Grule seconds, and Ms. Hahn is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, announcements, weekend events. Mr. Padilla.
As Tommy Lasorda says, every night you go to bed, pray for health, pray for family, and pray for the Dodgers. We've got a big series this weekend up in San Francisco. We're up by a game and a half in the division with 10 games left. So we need a good showing this weekend in San Francisco, and next weekend, we'll be back here in Los Angeles. Hopefully, we'll have Clemson by then.
Would you like to confirm or deny the rumors about them bringing you in for the last few games, Mr. Padilla?
Hey, he's on the bench.
All right, warming up. All right, Mr. Cardenas.
We are desperate. I mean, the situation is going to be good for Los Angeles Dodgers. I just wanted to announce the bone marrow drive that we're having at Church on the Way this -- on the West Campus this Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So far, we've been able to register over 500 individuals in the San Fernando Valley to register for the bone marrow drive. That's going to be the biggest drive we have so far. Once again, at Church on the Way on their West Campus on Kester and Sherman Way, this Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's a drive both in Spanish and English. It's called Medula Ossia in Spanish, and this is something that's going to save the lives of many, many individuals, and we need to register people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes, do you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to -- a few thoughts on the Dodgers is that every time we've had them here, the presentation, they've gone on a five-to-six-game winning streak, so we should call them in before they leave.
All right.
Get them on a roll again.
Let's get them in as soon as possible. And Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I just wanted to announce this Sunday, September 26th, the Little Landers Historical Society introduces a new exhibit, Boxes, Boxes, and More Boxes, at the Bolton Hall Museum on Commerce Avenue, and it's open Sundays and Tuesdays from 1:00 to 4:00. And it's actually running almost until February 28th. We encourage people to come in and kind of learn a little bit of history about the Sanlito Hanga community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, thank you very much. And when we speak of the Dodgers, too, we want to salute Tommy Lasorda. I believe we had 55 years with the organization just recently. And also, if you want to root for the Dodgers, root for the Angels, too, because it'd be great to see a freeway series. I know we've got to pray a lot for that, as they say. But this weekend at the Grove, the Farmer's Market, there's a San Tenero Festival, which the public is invited to attend near Palm Pacific Park. And also, that's all weekend long. Mr. Garcetti, you were a champion of this in Hollywood, and now it's moved a little south. But also, this weekend on Franklin Avenue, between Bronson and Beechwood, there's the special fundraiser organized by the Community for Fire Station 82 and the firefighters and their special needs in the Hollywood area. So that's a welcome festival in the street on Franklin Avenue between 1:00 and 5:00, and quite an interesting and dynamic section of our city that the public is invited to attend. And Mr. Garcetti, I thank you very much.
I thank you, Mr. Labonge. Other announcements, colleagues. Couple other things in Council District 13. Want to invite folks in Little Armenia area of East Hollywood for our second annual cleanup. We had a couple hundred youth last year join with members of the community. We'll be meeting again tomorrow at 8:30 on Alexandria between Hollywood and Sunset, and we'd love to see folks there tomorrow. Also, there's going to be a resource fair tomorrow at El Centro de Pueblo in Echo Park on La Moine, just south of Sunset Boulevard. That'll be starting at noon. All kinds of health care and other resources will be gathered there together. And then, lastly, at the Hollywood Farmer's Market this weekend at 11:00 a.m., there will be a salsa, not dancing, but salsa as in eating contest, and we invite people to bring their best salsa recipes and come down and check that out as well. And of course, tonight at sundown is Yom Kippur, and so many of us will be joining with folks throughout the community on this high holy day in the Jewish calendar, so we wish them well. If I can ask everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask this adjourned in memory of Emmanuel Opara, a resident of 8th District, who was unfortunately killed during a robbery of his apartment Tuesday, September 7th. Funeral service will be held at Harrison Ross Marjory this evening at 5:00 p.m. He leaves one daughter and several other family members.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other adjourned motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a great weekend.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.